It depends.
Do you know how to work that information?
That's right, I think the last one made a high, like most, most viewed was the last meeting last pair of, pair of ten he had in the hundreds.
Alright, five o'clock, I'm gonna pause me door with standing flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July from county council meeting here, we'll go ahead and get started. Look for a motion to approve the June seventeenth minutes as presented, or if somebody sees a change needing to be made, we could, we would take or adopt those with the change if so needed. They were mailed out or emailed your packet.
Make a motion to approve the June twenty twenty five minute as presented.
Justin Gross makes a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Dave Frome, any further discussion here board? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it's approved. Alright guys, moving down here to the additionals, we have two that have been advertised here, and Leila was here last time for the autopsy expenses, just never know what, where we're at on that, or how those are gonna be. She estimates she needs another twenty-five thousand, and we advertise those out of county general for, for her, it has been advertised, so look for a motion to approve the transfer.
I'll make a motion additional.
Or additional, sorry, thank you Dave. Dave Frome made a, a motion to approve the additional, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Brian Grollick seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Alright, next one up here, the judge was here last time, got the seventy-five hundred dollars for the community warranty, Megan's thing, we talked about last time, we all talked to the judge. Judge is here, if anybody else has got a question to him, but it's covered upgrade support for the remainder of the year for their computer system. No questions for the judge, I'll look for a motion to approve the additional seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Susan Harris sec, or makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Justin Gross seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Alright, thank you judge.
Thank you. If you guys get a chance, I'd like you sometime, go and come up, check it out, that new Velmas is, I mean, it's really impressive, and with your help, with, with this money used to prove, we put in some new electrical under our council table, so they can plug in, so it's kinda helped modernize the whole courtroom, so thank you very much, so.
You're welcome.
So she can keep her cellphone charged, right?
I will promise you this, those calls never end.
Yeah. Okay, that's the, the only two additionals we have here tonight that have been advertised, moving down here, we'll go to transfers, Megan is here, she needs to increase law books and decrease paper products, two hundred dollars. Any questions for Megan, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve the transfer. Alright, Dave Gogel moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ryan Grollick seconds, any further discussion, questions for Megan? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfer approved. Alright, then again, you're welcome, you, you, we got one more, but. Yes, but it's, it's okay. We got, we've got, we need to increase office cleaning, decrease equipment, two hundred thirty dollars to make it to the end of the year, look for a motion to approve or questions for Megan.
Make a motion to approve.
Justin Gross has made a motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
Dave Frome seconds, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion approved. Okay.
I had it in, and I don't know if she wants to talk about this today, but that came through my desk today, asking for additions, I don't know if she was wanting to go there.
Okay, yeah, hey, it's fine, we can talk about it while you're here real quick, if anybody's got a question, so we're gonna advertise guys for an additional for the prosecutor's office, six thousand out of the pre-trial division fund, which you know is not the kind of thing for depositions, you're just guessing your law on deposition money, right Megan?
Last page in your books.
Yeah, I think we're going to make it, make sure we've had some trials, we expect more deposition where sometimes a thousand dollars, so it should be the very last, we do need more to redefine the matters, we anticipate your situation more because we received it.
Yeah, alright guys, it's on the last page of our book here, so Dave's looking at the fund real quick, I'm sure there's, there's plenty of money in there, I'm sure.
Two hundred, two hundred something.
Alright, there's plenty of money in it, so we'll, we'll advertise for this Megan, and take, take a provise on our next meeting.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, Health Department, we've got a transfer here, if you read the things, for clinical equipment, which is a medical freezer, so they want to increase six thousand dollars for vaccinations, I think that's for why, for when you travel, is that right Mindy?
Yes.
And decrease contractual services by six thousand dollars, Mindy's here, any questions for her, or not, I'll look for a motion to approve the transfer.
This, this is a portable freezer?
Yes, it's a twenty liter, the.
Twenty liters, that one, so.
Yeah, we have some larger ones, it's thirty-five and a twenty meter, we don't have a freezer in that size, and there are like two vaccines that they take, so we don't need a beer, and it, it just makes it way easier to load it in the car and all that, and then we bring it.
A portable freezer costs six thousand dollars?
Yeah, they used to be about three, I think last time it was around, so yeah, I was spending a lot for him, we're not that.
Well, it has to be offered, like I said.
Yeah, it has its own compressor and all that stuff.
Battery, compressor.
Um, well.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't warrant unless you.
Right, right, yeah, it's, it's, we keep a plug in, and we also have a portable battery come with it, you can plug into your, your, your vehicle, the transport, you can invent it all the time, yeah, you can monitor it constantly, so.
Those have like a very.
Thirty thousand dollars for. Trust me, very fine variance of like temperature, and you gotta look at what's in there, those vaccines, if those go bad, they're, it's a lot, it's six thousand dollars worth of inventory in there.
Medical, drug, anything.
Yeah, don't matter, Medicaid pays for it. While they're billing over, right, yeah, alright guys, what we wanna do here, we wanna, kinda get a motion to approve?
Alright, take good care of it, that's just all, six thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Alright, Dave Frome makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan Harris seconds, any other questions? Alright, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any approve?
What do you do with the old one?
Um, we're keeping those, in fact, um, this will be our, our second, our second freezer, we've got one that's larger, and then like one of the refrigeration units, we used to have this old little creepy looking refrigerator in the back that we keep specimens, animal specimens, so we try to recycle, and so we're gonna use one of those, and we want it and everything, so yeah, it'll just kind of recycle around.
Get ready to sell one, let me know.
Alright, yeah, so.
Alright, everybody was in favor there, so motion, motion approved. Alright guys, next, Family Recovery Court, Michaela Class is here on that, and they've changed kinda the way, I guess, what they need to call their, their services, rising.
So yeah, there are no, the state or great for for that fund, or those two funds is no longer allowing us to have incentive monies in there, and so I just have to transfer those monies into other places.
Okay, so we've got, we've got two of them here, guys, we're gonna increase outreach in, increase transportation, and then decrease incentives by ten thousand, and then on the, we can probably do these together, then we can increase the participant treatment programs by ten thousand, decrease incentives by ten thousand, two transfers, ten thousand dollars each. Any questions for Michaela, or if not, look for a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them, or three of them, I guess, alright.
Increase two and decrease.
Yeah, two, yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Alright, Justin Gross seconds, alright, any other questions or concerns? Alright, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, transfers approved. Alright, let's go, there, alright. Alright, here we go for the Sheriff's Department, I think they have one, two, three, four, five, five transfers they'd like to advertise for next month, Chief Deputy is here, so it's Scott, so we'll just, just go through these, and ask them if anybody has any questions, if not, we'll just advertise them, and take, take action on them next month. So, first one we have is twelve thousand five hundred dollars for inmate prescriptions, if you all have anything you wanna add, just feel free to add it. The second, we have the jail, jail meals for sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, hospital additionals from where inmates are sick and we have them, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, cell phones for the Sheriff's Department, we didn't budget nothing, they need fifty-four hundred for the rest of the year, and then always, we have overtime, unless we're not fully staffed, for forty thousand, so, any questions for Scott or Ryan, if not, we'll just make a motion to advertise this for next month. What, what you got Frome?
I just love how the excuse for the one is because we are fully staffed, and the next stage, the excuse for that one is because we're not fully staffed, so.
Well, it's two different things, one is Sheriff's deputies and one's jailers.
Yeah.
It's two different, I mean, it's under the same budgets, but it's, I mean, it's under two different account, you know, so we're probably short on jailers, but we are fully staffed on deputies, right?
That's correct, yeah.
I'll move that we advertise this five additional for next month.
Dave's made a motion, we advertise these five additionals for next month, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan Harris seconds, any other discussions, questions for Chief Deputy or Scott? Alright, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, we'll, we'll get them advertised for y'all next month. I do have one question, and just, I guess, I mean, Sheriff right here, are, are we over so far on the, on the meals, because the cost of foods went up, are we, are we like getting more contract food, are we, are, are we cooking, or what's the, what's the dinner, I mean, it just seems like a pretty significant increase.
It, it is, uh, we, the price of foods went way up, and then our amount of inmates is up, when I was a more inmate, right now it's half of the law, I broke all that down, the way it's, the reason it's weird, I broke down the monthly, and just kinda divided it out, and that's roughly what we're making for the job here.
Yeah, yeah, so it says in here, I mean, y'all can read them, it says thirteen thousand five hundred dollars a month for meals, I just didn't think we'd ever spend that much, so, yeah, we're, anyways, okay, alright, um, next thing up here on the agenda is EMA, and I see Mark Lautner's back there, and he's in here, and he wants to talk to us probably about this antenna that he's got from Southern Indian, or PSC, and, and a radio committee, and he's requesting ten thousand dollars, go ahead Mark.
Right, uh, I want to let everybody know, I sent y'all an email, but also that is part of that, that the PSC fiber has a hundred eighty foot tower solidized, you don't long, no longer use anymore, and they signed the, a, they wanted to only expand the county, and we wanna use it here to rock for the US building, so we can have more control of the county, and put it on county property, uh, did send a PDF to that, listing the, old Marcos agreement donation, bring it on the email for that, and it's been regularly taken care of, had its required inspection done in a timely manner, and then the next thing is, the radio committee decided that they need to have a professional coverage study done for each vendor, and wants to bid on this, and right now it's three, and with that, that professional engineering study comes the cost, and that cost is about ten thousand dollars, four thousand for one, three thousand for one, three thousand for the other vendor to get it right, that's one of the aspects that we did look at, to make sure we get it right, and once we get these studies done, and once the radio committee gets them back, or over those, that way we can write a performance back off of that coverage setting, so that's why I'm asking for the ten thousand dollar, a little proper way to do that, and this is going through, I guess, the two guys who sit through the commissioner's budget on their line item, that we usually do now, a final review, however you guys like to do that, so, but that's why I'm asking for us to start to get that process in order.
What's the study, what are we actually looking, are we just looking at like deficits or areas that need better coverage, or what's actually?
Yeah, so they'll go and, and do their own studies, each vendor will with their own equipment, with a, I forget what the particular name of it is, will identify where the weak areas are, and they'll go see what they can provide with that, with their, you know, or performance spec, and see where the existing system's at, and it'll be on, on a level playing field, they're, let's see.
I guess, I guess the only thing that I can see is kinda going back to that first thing, is what if the study shows that Rockport doesn't need any further tower coverage site, they could use that tower elsewhere.
That's very possible, true, now then, with that, I need to find county property to put it on, so, uh, one vendor's looking at another area possibly, uh, but, but before we can do that, we need to have something on paper that we can prove to, you know, to make a good decision on, write a good performance back on.
Got a chance? So, so the fir, the first thing here, you know, this donation waiver at least, I mean, that's, that would be with the commissioners, I mean, really.
Okay, I get it, I just want you to be aware of it.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't pertain, that, no money, no, doesn't pertain to us, that, I'm, I'm sure you presented that to them.
Yes, it did.
Okay, did they have any insight on what, what they wanted to do, the commissioners, about the study, I mean, did they want to proceed forward, did they, what was their advice?
Or is that, certainly.
Is that what they was?
I don't know if there was official work over there, or not, but we spoke about it, but it probably should have increased on here.
That's their fault.
We can, we can advertise them for the money, they can, they'll, they'll have a meeting before we, I mean, alright guys, I mean, you, you hear Mark's request, I mean, in my, and this is my opinion, you know, I would think we would kind of do an additional somewhere in the, this would be found in the utility tower repeater antenna, thirty-five one thirty in the commissioner's budget, is kinda where I would think you could do it, unless somebody else has got a different idea, how to, how to work to pay for that, or where to put the thing, you know, I mean, it's, that's kinda where I would, I would think we would put it, and we're already over, while we're talking about that, the fund's already basically spent, so we would.
Yeah, I don't think so, actually.
There's no extra in there, so we have to, we need to, we have to advertise additional for the whole, for the whole ten thousand, I mean, just, I guess what was asked is, I don't, I've never worked in this field of, of equipment, but like, is this something you would normally have to pay for, or like, if I was gonna give you a bid for my product, I wouldn't, I wouldn't I just need to do my own research to figure out what I needed to do?
Yeah, but to write a performance spec, and that's one of the things I was gonna ask him, I said, if you're the winning bidder, you deduct that price off the, the amount of that, that we want to pay, maybe a little bit more, but I mean, these are studies, they're expensive to be done, and you know, we want it done right, since we've never had this done before, so we get it right, but.
Like he said, if you're the radio guy, you're gonna put in a radio system, you're gonna have to do it right, and if you have to do a study for yourself, you're right, or?
If we don't have, we can't write a performance spec.
Yeah, so if they say they can cover so much as Mr. County, there's, where aren't those specs, they have to cover that, and they have to be the ones responsible to make sure it gets, they're not, no.
They have to cover the specs that you gave them.
Yeah, they can't come back and, you know, give more money to do this for emails.
If you gave them the specs, and they covered the specs, and we still didn't get coverage, it's not their fault, it's our fault, because we didn't have good enough, is that, that a way they get out of it, is that a loophole, for them to get out of that, right? You put.
Well, they have to, it's be a performance spec, they have to meet that performance for the.
Yeah, well, let's say they meet that, they meet that performance, but it still doesn't get everything, as much as we want.
Well, God forbid, I hope there's enough us on the radio commission, then we can make a good determination on, on that, to make sure that we get this right, absolutely.
I know it's been a problem, and we need to do it right.
It just sounds funny.
You made a good point.
I mean, I just. I have to pay to get a, hey, you wanna bid for us, or pay us, right, man, that just sounds odd, I mean.
And if I wanna buy a truck for you that's gonna haul ten tons, I gotta do a study to see that.
And I'm gonna charge you for a quote, yeah, it's just.
I mean, I'm, I don't know, I just thought like, that's just my way of thinking, if I, you know, if I was gonna buy something, you know, I'm, I mean, I get, at the end of the day, I mean, it's gotta work right, and you gotta provide dispatch and stuff to get the, the people there, and get everybody where they need to go, I mean, I'm, it just seems odd to pay to, to do this, to do the work for them, it's like we're saying, it's like we're doing all the homework for them, and just saying like, this is what you need, it's like, I would say.
We didn't do this last time, one year ago.
That's exactly right, you know what you got.
As I say, that's why, that's why we're in the situation we're in.
Okay. Alright, well.
I'll make a motion that we advertise ten thousand dollars out of County General Coit.
You figure out Coit?
The county, yeah, infrastructure department, right?
It's fine, alright, Dave Gogel made a ten, a motion, we advertising the ten thousand.
Unless you don't want to, unless you got another idea, that's fine, that's what we're doing with this kind of stuff.
Yeah, it's fine, that's what the money's there for, infrastructure improvements.
I'll second.
Brian Grollick seconds, alright, any other questions for Mark, Stephanie, concerns? Alright.
Oh, I'm, I'm just gonna, or wait, are they voting?
I'm getting ready to vote.
I'll go, yeah, that's something else, go ahead.
I have one more thing for you, may I be open?
Okay, alright, got a motion, just second, ten thousand dollars out of County General Coit.
Can I advertise it for next?
Advertise it for next month, alright, everybody in favor, aye? Alright, any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we got that, man, we'll get to work, uh, yeah, seven.
So just for your information, the business open, I was the old postal vote today, and it sold for three thousand dollars, yeah, I was excited, so, um, anyway, I know, I'm gonna put in, ask you guys for that money, so I just need to put in for additional, um, next month, is that how I need to do that?
Yeah, just get it to Melissa tomorrow, and she'll advertise it.
You just spent that money on.
Certainly, oh, that's somewhere else.
Yeah, just, just get the, just get the additional, Melissa will advertise it, for next, and we'll take, we'll take action next month.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, alright, uh, any other questions for Mark, Stephanie? The next up, Family Recovery Court, Michaela Class is here, she's got her budget, I think she just needs us to approve it.
So I am a, I'm just applying for a grant for twenty twenty-six, I just need approval to apply for it, it's one of the ones we've applied for since we've been in operation, no cost to the county for anything like that.
Okay guys, here it is, it's a forty-two thousand, she's applying for a forty-two thousand dollar grant, no cost to the county, clearly outlines what's allowed, not allowed on the, on the thing, we've done this for, for several years, so, would like for a motion to approve for the Justice Partners Addiction Response Grant twenty twenty-six.
Make the motion.
Alright, Justin Gross has made a motion, do I have a second? Dave Frome seconds, any further discussion, questions for Michaela? Hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion approved.
Thank you all.
Apply, thank you, alright, moving, just a couple things here on my book, alright, moving, moving down the list, here the abatement, the, there's an invite here.
I could interrupt you.
Yes, Judge?
Talking forward on court stuff, we had another plan out for E for wage monies to cover our, because we're, we're down staffed now, right now, I don't think I had it come before the council, but I had it before, without that four E fund, so it's.
Four D.
Four E?
Four D.
Four E, okay, yeah.
Melissa, anything on that?
Uh, I don't have anything on it with me.
Okay, you have a little file, if you need to see it.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can.
Well, it's alright, it's okay, just wanna make sure I'm not missing something.
No, I sure can see that one, so it's like a transfer.
Do a transfer?
Yes, it's a transfer, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can work on it, okay. Alright, we got a transfer from the, from the Circuit Court Judge for Tamely Woosley's for overtime, and for, we need to increase Fund eleven seven oh five oh three two, which is the four E account, thirty-two fifty-seven seventy-six, she is working overtime to keep our civil docket moving forward as a new hire is being made, so, alright guys, it's filed June the twentieth here, so, about in time, so, alright, any questions for the judge, if not, we'll make a motion here to approve the transfer.
Probably the amount again?
Uh, thirty-two fifty-seven seventy-six, and after the meeting, we'll make everybody copy for their, for their do. And you know, it's, it's got all the things, she's worked one hour, it looks like two or three, a few days of overtime, ninety hours of overtime here, so, if you might want to look at that real quick before we make a motion, you're more than welcome to.
And I'd like to answer the questions that you guys have.
Just continuing, this will continue on, continue work overtime.
Yeah, until we get the new hire manual, which we're hoping in August.
We got a motion.
We don't have a motion yet, I'll make a motion, alright, got a motion from Brian Grollick, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dave Gogel seconds, any other discussion for the judge? Any other discussion amongst ourselves, alright, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. It's just a transfer, yes, and we'll get. Alright, thank you, Judge.
Hey, thank you all, that'd be nice.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, yeah, we're down for that, alright guys, back to my, thank you, alright, so in your packet here, there is a invitation to, to the groundbreaking for the Superior Ag, Ohio River Terminal, on the twenty-first, ten AM, outside Rockport, you all let me know how many people wanna go after the meeting, I'll tell Chelsea, so, she don't email me that, and I think they're just looking for a number, or if we don't, if Richard doesn't like what happened, my customers are not welcome here, I don't know, uh, anyways, guys, we, they were here, Richard was here last month, Ben Duttlinger is here with him this time, he, everybody knows Ben, he's on the board there of Superior Ag, so, you know, they brought this request to us here last month, with a, about a twenty-two million dollar investment out here out of Grandview, so, they're asking for a ten-year phase-in abatement, so, you know, we, they brought it last month, we just totally would like a little time here to discuss this, or think about it, if I guess, really think about amongst ourselves what we were thinking, so, I'm, I'm sure everybody's done their homework, so, Richard, Ben are here, they're here to answer any questions you want, and then we'll, we'll look for a motion to proceed, if that's what the, the group wants to do. Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Hurry straight forward.
Richard, any comments?
Now, we're just excited, we're in Spencer County, we've been here since nineteen twenty-eight, put a twenty-four million dollar investment in twenty seventeen, and we're, we're phasing in on the abatement there, that we're in year eight, I think, into us, and getting close to fully, fully paint all, all of that, looking to do it again, I mean, there's lots of places we could put, consolidate facilities, both in the state and on the other side of the river, and we strategically chose to, to stay in Spencer County and keep, keep it close there.
And you're, you're ready to go, I mean, you got your ducks on the road, ready to go. Alright, any other questions, concerns?
There's only one other point, I'd like to add, I'll put my hat on as a volunteer for the county, from the aspect of Superior for years, year in, year out, because they work between five and ten thousand dollars.
Year in, year out, because they work between five and ten thousand dollars to the rural youth, the four H and, and that kind of stuff, annually, and on top of that, uh, they were second donor to you guys as far as our, uh, uh, donor for our, uh, four H for living on the fairgrounds. So, from that standpoint, we, we do bring best back into the community as much more than any other business here in the area, so.
Is these facilities are state-of-the-art, they could be used with EMS services, with training, and asthma response, and different things, and we, we, uh, we want our, our people trained and run the good facilities, and keep them looking good for the area, and then, again, open up, if there's other things that we need to can, and we'll help to utilize them together, but, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, guys, anybody want to make a motion, uh, of, of what we want to do?
Well, you know, we want to be open for business, and people are watching us, other, other entities are watching us, other, other businesses that are looking for spots to locate, you know, they know what just goes on here. Superior Ag is, you know, they've been here, and now they're expanding here. We gave them the, the full ten-year phase-in on their first project, and we've done that on some other projects, I think we need to be consistent. So, I'll make a motion that we go with a full ten-year phase-in on real and personal property, like we did it here.
All right, Dave's made a motion to do a, a, a ten-year phase-in, uh, abatement, um, on real and personal property, do I have a second? Dave Frome seconds, any further discussion?
You know, ten, the second year they're paying ten percent, and ten percent of that is a little better than a hundred percent enough, so we need to get it here.
All right, I've got a motion, a second, any other questions? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. All right.
Appreciate you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, I'll see you guys on coming first.
All right, okay. Sounds good, all right, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, guys, um, next up, uh, if you go back here to the, uh, wheel tax, um, you know, Brian, um, we've got, we've got, we've got the, uh, ordinance here for the wheel tax, um, so, uh. Anyways, Brian, uh, went, listened to the wheel tax training, um, you know, we, nobody wants to, um, putting more tax on the people than what we have to, I mean, that's, um, we, we all, I think, on this, in this table agree, um, as a body that, you know, taxpayers' money is better in their pocket than ours. But, the state, you know, um, has had some shortfalls here, and, um, they're, they're just pushing some things down. So, um, we've, uh, we've, we've got towed, and it's, Brian went to the training for us, um, I've looked it up, uh, the House passed, the Senate passed, there's a state legislator there, you know, if we don't put this wheel tax in as a county, we can't, um, we can't apply for community crossing grants. So, you know, we've been getting a million to, I mean, some years, two point four million across all taxing entities for the county. So, um, you know, my, the, the thing that I had Andrew, uh, present here or, uh, for us, uh, and prepare is, is that the lowest rate we can put the tax in. So, uh, I mean, we don't want to tax any more than we have to, but we, we do need to, uh, adopt this. So, that would be at the, uh, five dollar, uh, rate and the seven fifty, uh, rate, um, so, for the, is the, is the lowest rate, um, we can, we can adopt, and no more than twenty-five dollars on any motor vehicle, uh, so, and this, we have to adopt this here, um. We, we can wait till next month to adopt it, we do not have to adopt it tonight, we can, uh, we can adopt it in, uh, August, we just have to have it adopted by, uh, September first, so it can go into effect, um, for next year. So, anyways, that's what I've got, that's what Andrew prepared, Andrew, if you have anything you'd like to add, to what I just said, feel free to add it.
No, I mean, technically, it's two different, it's an X size certex, and a wheel tax, they have to pass at the same time, you can't pass one and the other, it's the minimum amount on each.
Yeah, right. Yes.
I guess hypothetically, I didn't wasn't sure how to calculate what would be less between the two percent or ten percent versus just a flat seven fifty, so I just said the flat seven fifty.
Right.
I don't think we have to publish this as a penalty or forfeiture, there's nothing in the statute that said we have to be publicating on it, uh, so you guys are free to pass it whenever you want, or not pass it, or wait until August, um, but.
Can a little ton truck be like twenty-six thousand pound, three fifty truck? And would that be the seven fifty and the five, is that all, or is there more on that? You said twenty-five dollar, where do you put?
Uh, no, I, I think if, uh, you get a, uh.
I read it, I thought that was it.
Seven fifty plus five, so twelve dollars and fifty cents, but I think, uh.
Trucks will declare those weighted eleven thousand pounds or less.
Eleven thousand.
Have to be at least seven fifty annually, and can be, oh, twenty-five is the maximum.
Maximum you can charge, yes.
Seven fifty, we can get about.
Seven fifty is the least, yes.
Seven fifty and five is the least.
Yes.
So, twelve fifty, that's where we want to be.
Right, we'll charge, we'll charge the least, we can charge.
And there are some vehicles that are exempt from wheel tax, so I just put that in the statute, but it's in the statute, so.
Right. This is a pretty, this is a pretty cut and dry thing.
Church buses and, uh, there's, there's some other entities.
Government vehicles.
Government vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And there's fifty-five counties out of the ninety-two that already have.
That already have.
And Melissa is going to distribute the link to everybody to that training if you want to look at it.
Okay, we're going to make more work for our auditor, more work for our curator.
Yeah, right. You just really, I just really hate when anytime that the state sends something down, give it to us, you know? We didn't really have, have to do this, but you can't afford not to do it, it's one of them mandates that they're taking the control away from the left, the local people.
They brought this up years ago one time, they're saying that, you know, if you want money from the state for your roads, you got to help yourself, well, we, we've been helping ourselves for twenty years or longer with the CED tax. We're probably the only county in the state that puts a half of their income tax into our roads, our, our city, all that goes in our road, except for what we do for the internet, we took five million out of the internet, but all that money's been going in the roads all these years, where most counties, that, their money goes into the record budget process, and it's gobbled up, and it's, and, and we, we, we mentioned that at that time to our legislators, and they constantly, well, yeah, you got a good party, you're putting two million dollars in. Now, it's, it's come back again, and we, we lost this round, I guess. And they should give us credit for that, that should be the same as the wheel tax, the X size tax, that we put two million of your local money in, it should be just as good, in fact, a lot better.
Right, so.
All right.
All right, guys, do we want to, do we want to?
Wait till next month.
Wait till next month?
You'll have enough time, won't you, Andrew?
Yeah, I want to prepare the language.
Okay, it's already prepared, yeah, I mean, it's just, we just got to vote on it next month.
Before September one.
September one, so we can just vote on it, um, and, you know, I just had it here, um, so. I just look for a motion to, uh, table ordinance.
I'll make a motion, table it till.
Twenty dash oh four.
August, uh, meeting.
All right, second, all right, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, y'all can review it, chew it, but we'll take that.
If somebody wants a different language, or a different mouth, or something, you need to let me know ahead of time, so we have it.
Prepare, prepare, we got, we have to pass it in the next meeting.
I think we're unanimous, so we made a little.
I think, I think we all feel, we don't want to do it out, and if we have to do it, which we feel like we do, we're going to do it as low as we possibly can.
Right. I agree. All right, uh, Dave, County Credit Card, I don't, you got any?
So, there's no initiative here to do anything with that, so, the credit card, I mean, you guys are all going to let that ride, so, all this problem, I guess. I mean, I was, you know, I thought maybe it was a way we could, we could prevent taxpayer money from being spent through the credit card process, but.
It's not possible, we, we've listed a lot of games, but, you know, if they agree, or if the commissioners have decided that's inappropriate, yeah.
All right. All right, uh, Andrew, legal report. Okay. Uh, any old business to be brought up here tonight? All right, any new business?
Uh, let's see. Remember next month, after next month, council meeting and budget for next month.
Yeah, so, so when?
Okay, so she'll have to schedule, uh, different days of.
Yes, I'll get that.
Wednesday, Thursday, we should hopefully wrap up by lunchtime. Right.
We meet Tuesday night, and then we come in for budget Monday morning.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, and hopefully done by Friday at lunchtime, so.
This year went quick.
Bring your, bring your erasers and your pencils, we'll be ready to do business. All right, hearing none, no, uh, no new business to be brought in front of the board here tonight, I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan seconds. Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Word adjourned, thank y'all for being here.